Chairman, Dr. Phipps and the Board. I am here to discuss naming of our facilities, in particular basketball floor, after two of former coaches, Danny Anderson and Karen Trivett. In discussing Coach Anderson, he spent 23 years as a coach at West Caldwell High School, where he was 488 and 129 losses, won 20 Coach of the Years, state champion runner-up, 16 conference titles, 12 sectional titles, three regional championships. He was just recently inducted into the North Carolina High School State Athletic Association Hall of Fame, and he's also a member of the Caldwell County Hall of Fame. Has been a mentor to several coaches within Caldwell County, who are currently serving as coaches within Caldwell County. In regards to Karen Trivett, Karen Trivett was the Lady Warriors basketball coach for 15 years, won two state championships, two regional championships, several regional appearances, 10 state playoff championships, most importantly too, is still an active member in serving West Caldwell as a clock operator, and still gives numerous hours to West Caldwell. So here on behalf of both Danny Anderson and Karen Trivett in naming of the basketball court after both of these individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Stire. Do we have any other comments concerning this matter? Anyone?
What is a policy number we're talking about?
What is it, 9300?
9300.
9300. Any other comments?
For two reasons, 9300 for us. The policy...
I'll pull it out. Hold on, Steve.
I'll have it branded if you need me to.
Tell me.
We put you right on the spot, didn't we?
So in policy 9300, naming facilities, it says the Caldwell County Board of Education considers naming facilities to be a significant endeavor, since the name of facility can reflect upon the students, staff, school system and community. New public schools in Caldwell County shall be named in accordance with their geographic locations or similar site-specific identifiers such as roads, streets, subdivisions or communities. Notwithstanding this requirement, existing schools, buildings, rooms or other structures or facilities may continue to bear names that do not conform to the Board's retirement. The superintendent shall submit a recommended name or limited list of recommended names to the Board for approval. The Board shall hold a public hearing to receive and consider comments from individuals and groups for naming or changing the name of a school or school facilities before adopting a new name. In addition to naming schools, the Board of Education may name specific school facilities, such as gymnasiums, stadiums, auditoriums, media centers or any other space within a building. Such facilities shall be named in accordance with the following criteria. A school facility may not be named for employees or school officials for a period of three years after retirement. School facilities may be named for community leaders, educational leaders, state and national figures in geographic areas.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Stire. Any other comments? Anyone? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. The hearing is adjourned and we will have a regular meeting in about 10 minutes. This April 11th meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Education is called to order, and we're certainly happy to have you with us tonight. It's an exciting time of the year. The school year is fast drawing to a conclusion here. And tonight, we're going to be recognizing a number of people. We've got groups of students, we're going to be recognizing some bands and courses, and we're also going to be recognizing individual students as well as staff and teachers. Want to mention that Mrs. Edwards is out of town, and she's here with us by Zoom, and we're certainly happy that she's able to be here by Zoom with us tonight, be a part of this meeting. So we will go on with the agenda at this point. I want to recognize Mr. Chris Becker, who will provide the invocation for the Board.
Because as I was contemplating what to say tonight and kind of the wording, I struggled a bit, and most people that know me know I don't struggle talking a lot. So I did a little bit. I went down the road, I know Easter's right around the corner, I was going to talk a little bit about Easter and add a little bit in there about jelly beans. You know, they distribute 16 billion jelly beans during Easter, you know, and different things like that, and I decided to go a different route tonight. So if you would, I just ask you to bow your head. Go to the place where you feel is your place, your comfortable place, your happy place, as we think and reflect a little on Easter and what it means to you. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, for all of our staff members, both teaching, support and administrative. We ask that you bless them abundantly. We seek your wisdom, guidance, courage and strength today as we always do. Be with us in our deliberations today and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity and that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from short-sightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are good for all and guard us from blinded self-interest. Grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. May all the glory be to you. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. We will proceed with the pledge of allegiance tonight, being led by Assistant Superintendent Mr. David Johnson, if you would stand, please.
Would you please join me in the pledge? Teaching, salute, pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, we have the approval of the agenda, which the Board has had an opportunity to review over the past several days. Do I hear a motion, we approve the agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. Next, we are going to vote by consent on the various groups of minutes. We have, first of all, on March the 8th, 2022, a public hearing with West Lenore and Valmead Community concerning consolidation of the two schools. Also, on that day, a work session, and we have minutes from that meeting on that date. And then we had our regular Board meeting on March the 14th, 2022. So do I hear a motion, we approve the March 2022 meeting minutes, those being items 3B through 3D?
I make a motion to approve the March 22nd meeting minutes, items 3B through 3D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. Next, we have announcements, and I want to call on Mr. BJ Ford for those.
All right. The best announcement, April 15th, April 18th through the 22nd is spring break. And I know that's what everybody's been looking forward to getting to, that spring break. Also, with upcoming meetings on April 28th, the school board will be visiting the Early College in Casa, Dudley, Gateway and South Caldwell. That's always the highlight of being on the Board, I think, is visiting these schools and seeing the interaction with the children and the teachers. It's just been amazing to me. Our May work session will be made 3rd, and then our next Board meeting will be May the 9th.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Dr. Phipps, do you have some things to add?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I just want to do a recap of two events that went on a couple of weeks ago that were big across our system. The first is the Agriculture Expo, you heard us talking about it. We actually planned this for a couple of years, and because of COVID, we're unable to get together face to face until we were able to do it earlier this month at the fairgrounds. It had a wonderful day on Friday, and then we had an open day for the community. A lot of folks showed up and a wonderful experience. We'll debrief that activity and determine what we want to do differently moving forward, but want to thank everyone who had a hand in helping us do that. And on the evening, that Friday that we met, we had the Weekend Came Saturday event, and then Kaleidoscope on that Saturday evening. And Kaleidoscope, if you're not aware, is an annual showcase of talent of students in our school system, and all I can say is wow, incredible talent on display. And I'm glad there didn't have to be a winner pick, because everybody did a phenomenal job. And I walk out of there just thinking about young folks and the work that they can do in the performing arts area, it was just incredible. So a great opportunity to showcase that talent, very proud of everybody involved in that, and we're thankful for the Ed Foundation of Caldwell County for doing that work. And echoing what Mr. Ford said, I want to wish all of our employees, all of our students and anyone else involved in the school system, a very happy spring break. We know that it is sorely needed at this time of year, and glad that folks get a chance to catch their breath and be ready to finish out the school year. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Phipps. The next item on the agenda is probably the reason a good many of you came, and that is the honors and recognition. This part of our agenda will be led by Mrs. Libby Brown. She is a Director of Human, I should say, Community Relations. So if she'd come forward at this time, and Dr. Phipps and myself will hand out certificates.
Chairman Pennell, Vice Chairman Branch, Board Members and Dr. Phipps. We are honored and privileged to highlight student artwork again this month in the Education Center Art Gallery. We have some beautiful art pieces on display, and we are pleased to showcase several of our schools this month at the Ed Center, Collinsville School, Kings Creek School and William Lenore Middle School. And we encourage all of you to please come back at any time. So we are open from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, except next week is spring break. We're open during spring break, we are 12-monthers, so please come and enjoy that. That would be a great time to come and bring your relatives and your friends and enjoy your artwork that's on display. We are going to start with Kings Creek School. And August Mitchell, a fifth grader, has his artwork on display, beautiful piece. Lydia Stewart is the art teacher, and Melissa Costin is the principal. So if August will come forward, I know I saw him earlier, here he is. Yes, let's give him a round of applause. And is Ms. Stewart here, or Ms. Costin? Was it Ms. Stewart or Ms. Costin here? You want to come on up with your students? This is the force behind all that beautiful artwork, yes. So we have Caleb Swanner, Swanner, eighth grade, and he is also from Kings Creek School. Is Caleb here? Yes, please come forward, Caleb, yes. Yes. And we are now going to switch to Colletsville School. They have the same art teacher, so they share an art teacher, Lydia Stewart. And Jill Pippen is the principal. Addie Walsh. Addie is a sixth grader at Colletsville School. And I know Ms. Pippen is here, and there's... Come on, yes, come on, Addie. We also have an eighth grader, Danika Binge. Danika's artwork is on display, very nice piece there, and we are just delighted to have them. And we have one more student from Colletsville, Helen Haberado. So if Helen is here, she is an eighth grader. I don't see her this evening, but we are delighted to have these pieces that adorn our education center and just brightens it up with student artworks. So congratulations to this group of students. Pardon? Oh, yes, absolutely. Parents, feel free to get pictures. And teachers, anyone? Yes, right there, right front and center. Just go up there and get a picture. We welcome that. We're very proud of them. We know you are too.
Great job.
Okay. Congratulations again. We're very proud of you. Next, we have William Lenore Middle School, and they have a new art teacher, Jacqueline Kayhan. And Celine Ellison, the AP, the Assistant Principal, is here with us this evening. Lisa Vaughn, and I think most of the students are not going to be here because they have a STEM activity. So sometimes that happens. They have a big day at the school for that fun for all the kids, so I'm not sure, Celine?
Kayhan's right here.
Do we have one? All right, so we have... I'm just going to call, I'm going to go down the list, and if you're here, please come forward. And we'll quickly go through this. Madison Davis, sixth grade. All right. Emily Leon, seventh grade. Christian Quintana, eighth grade. Ian Sanderlin, seventh grade. And Xander Bruch, seventh grade. So we are glad you made it tonight. The rest are doing STEM. She knows where to be. Okay, they're at the school doing STEM, so we are grateful that you were able to make it this evening. We have two more students, two more students. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about character education. And, you know, we put a focus each month on character traits. And the character trait for the month of March was cooperation. We would like to recognize two of our students, one at the elementary level and one at the middle school level, who were selected because they exemplified the trait of working together with others and being of assistance, which is a very valuable trait to have. We will start with our elementary school representative, and that is Anna Eil Hernandez. Annel, thank you. Annel Hernandez. And that's not, thank you, is your kindergarten student? We were just waiting to see that little kindergarten student. So kindergarten student from Wendell Elementary, and Chad Smith is not the kindergarten student. He is the principal of the school, so we are very proud to... Do you want to say a few words about him?
Absolutely. Annel is a kindergarten student. He is a Yale student that we have, that we have been able to partner up with other Yale students. And he's kind of like an in-the-classroom interpreter. So he does a great job with cooperating with those students to make sure they know what the assignments are. We've even got them where they kind of pop up out of their desk and ask him, and he kind of gets everything settled. So he does a great job for us, great representative for cooperation.
Thank you so much, Chad. We appreciate that. Then we have a middle school representative from Hudson Middle School, and her name is Najla Alamari. I asked forgiveness before I started this, okay, on the names. So we are very proud of you, and she was helping me so nicely. Seventh grader at Hudson Middle School, Katie Elliott is the principal. And Katie, join her, please, and would you like to say just a few words about your student and her spirit of cooperation?
Yes, she's a wonderful spirit of cooperation. This is her second year. She moved here from Michigan last year, so this year we're really seeing from out of her shell. She's doing an excellent job again in the classroom with her academics. The point that other students are fighting over working her, angry. She's very kind to her teachers and to all of the students around her, and a great help to each and every one of her classmates. We love having her.
Thank you. Dad, you can get in the center. Very proud of you. Okay, we're going to change here for a second. We want you to see this other beautiful breathtaking artwork that we have on display. We are proud to announce that Highbryton High School art students entered the Mid-Carolina Scholastic Art Competition for the first time this year. The 2022 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, presented by the College of Arts and Architecture, have recognized some of America's most celebrated artists, including, and you'll recognize these names, Stephen King, Charles White, Joyce Carol Oates, and Andy Warhol. This is a remarkable accomplishment for our Caldwell County school students to be among these esteemed Scholastic Awards alumni. Congratulations to the following art students at Highbryton High School and to Jenna Bailey, Highbryton High art teacher, Courtney Wright principal, for these extraordinary art pieces. So we're going to go down, so these two young ladies, we're going to talk about their artwork. First of all, we're going to bring up Lily Deleon. So Lily, if you'll come up, please. Lily won two Honorable Mention Awards and a Silver Key Award. And please, Mrs. Bailey, please join her because you are the extraordinary talent that has boosted this art program and followed suit with some of the legacy there. We're just going to talk about legacy in just a second that we're continuing here in our school district. The first honorable mention, as Kathy had, was presented to Lily and Deleon for drawing an illustration entitled "Ensnared." The second one, an honorable mention in drawing an illustration entitled "Constrained," and that's the constraint. And then the next one, she received the prestigious Silver Key Award for her piece "Middlesome" in drawing and illustration. So a beautiful piece. We can see how you won that Silver Key. I'm going to also ask for the other student, Haley Grimbeek, to join us. So Haley, we want to recognize you as well. We're going to give you the wow factor. So we have these beautiful certificates from the Mid-Carolina Scholastic Art Competition. So now we're going to look at Haley's artwork. She won two Silver Key Awards and two Gold Key Awards at the Scholastic Art Competition. And remember, this is more on the regional level we're talking about now. The Silver Key presented for her two pieces in drawing and illustration include Detach and then Perspective. There is Perspective. I'm just going to give you a minute to take that in. Then the Gold Key Award for Letting Go. This piece also received the 2022 North Carolina Art Educator Association Award and will be featured in their next issue of their magazine by design. Haley Grimbeek received the Gold Key Award for the drawing and illustration entry, "A Piece of You," which was displayed on a billboard in Winston-Salem for the month of March. Gold Key Awards are automatically advanced to the national level of adjudication in New York City. Where else, right? The best place, one of the best places on earth for art. For Lily and Haley, their gold and silver key art pieces were on exhibit at the Mint Museum in Charlotte. Now, for the final piece, Haley Grimbeek was a 2022 National Award winner. More than 100,000 students submitted more than 260,000 works of art and writing to the 2022 Scholastic Awards. Their work was selected by some of the foremost leaders in the visual and literary arts for excellence in originality, technical skill, and the emergence of a personal voice or vision. Less than 2,000 works received a national medal, which places our Haley within the top 1% of all submissions. So if you're not wowed now, this is extraordinary for us right here in Caldwell County to have these two brilliant art students under the direction of Jenna Bailey. So let's give them a big round of applause. Again, congratulations. I think they're both seniors, right? Ms. Bailey, they're both seniors?
Yes.
And that's your advanced class of art students this year?
Yes, and they have both made their final decision. They're both attending NC State next year.
Okay, now we're going to talk about band and chorus. We've talked about visual arts, so now let's talk about music. The musical legacy continues in the Caldwell County school system. The accomplished band and choral directors of the past, and you may recognize some of these names, Claude Cogdal, Madeline Mullis, Camilla Graber, Bob Love, John Miller, and Captain James C. Harper, just to name a few, placed our schools in the highest category of respect among music educators throughout the state and country. Because of our excellence in band and chorus performances at state and regional festivals, Caldwell County has a wonderful reputation across the state of North Carolina. We also have the greats in music today in our schools, who continue this renowned status, directing and leading band and choral performances and sustaining and building on strong music programs in our schools. It is our privilege to recognize band and choral directors who have competed, in person, mind you, and you were all waiting for that, at the NPAs, the Music Performance Adjudication of North Carolina. For music students and directors, it's like preparing for the EOCs and the EOGs. We are amazed at their recent performances and their results. We would like to honor the band and choral directors at each middle and high school in recognition of their achievements. Okay, we're going to start with Colletsville. So Colletsville School, sixth grade band, received an excellent at the NPAs. Seventh and eighth grade band received superior. The director is Jonathan Beal, and the principal is Jill Pippen. Mind you, Jonathan Beal told me he had 26 more days. Gamel Middle School, eighth grade band, excellent. That's Stephen Robison or Robison. And Gamel Middle School chorus, excellent, Ben Watson. And the principal is Monica Martin. So congratulations to Gamel. Eighth grade band, superior in performance, Patrick Haymore. And is Stephanie Peak here with us? I don't know if Steph... Okay, Stephanie is here. She did not participate in the NPAs, but they went to the Carolins Festival of Music and received a superior. And we also have a student from Granite Falls Middle with us, Madison Childers. Madison, while she performed, she auditioned and she performed, and she gained second chair oboe in the North Carolina All-State Middle School Honors Band, the only student from our county, and she's related to someone in the room. But we... Come on up, Madison. Yeah, we have her certificate for you. Yeah. So we're going to go kind of to the halfway point. If that's okay, Dr. Phipps, we'll go to the halfway point. Okay. Highbryton High, symphonic band, superior rating, Hunter Suits, director. And... We also had them participate with the choir and the concert choir. And honors choir at Highbryton High School received an excellent rating, and the director is Justin Gray, and I'm not sure if he's... And I'll do... It's getting pretty crowded. You want me to... I'll do more. Let's do pictures. It's getting kind of crowded.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you, congratulations. And let me mention those principals too, because they're very proud. Granite Falls Middle School principal is here, Chris Ackerman, and Courtney Wright is the Highbryton High School principal. So they always give it their blessing and endorsement from the principalship of the school. So next, I think, is Hudson Middle School, and the eighth grade band, superior rating by Leah Massey. So congratulations. Then they also took two chorus groups, two NPAs. Hudson Middle School eighth grade chorus, excellent, and Hudson Middle School seventh grade chorus, superior rating, Chandler Smith, director. Chandler Smith, director. And Katie was up here earlier, and Katie Elliott is the principal. South Caldwell. Okay, Wind Ensemble, superior rating, Jason Childers and John Stafford. I don't know if Mr. Stafford is here. But Jason Childers, he is the master behind those groups. Also, Jason took the symphonic band to MPAs, and it also received a superior rating. So congratulations. Then for the chorus at South Caldwell High School, led by Justin Johnson, the Bella Voice received a superior rating in performance. He also took the, is it Elaganza? I think it's the Elaganza, Justin. Elaganza and Concert Choir, and they received an excellent rating. So we're very proud of these groups. Let's give them a and Rob Bliss is the proud principal there, leading the charge for South Caldwell High School. Thank you, Rob. We also have Wes Caldwell Concert Band, led by Jim Schulstad, and it received a superior rating. So congratulations to him. And the choir at Wes Caldwell High School, led by Bethany Wolfe. And is Beth, is Ms. Wolfe here? She isn't here? Okay, well, I can tell you, Mr. Styron back there, Craig Styron is very proud of her. The Chamber Choir and the Concert Choir received superior ratings. So I'm sure you're proud of that. Okay. Now we get to William Lenore Middle School. Let's do a picture.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So proud of you. Congratulations. Okay, so we're going to bring up Mr. and Mrs. Reed. Terry Reed from William Lenore Middle School, the band director, took the 7th grade band, superior rating. 8th grade band, superior rating. So let's give Terry a big round of applause. And Carla Reed. They're the dynamic duo at William Lenore. Okay, so Carla Reed, the chorus director, 6th grade chorus, superior rating. 7th grade chorus, superior rating. 8th grade chorus, superior rating. And treble chorus.
Superior.
Yes. I know all their colleagues go to them for quite a bit and respect them as you all work together so nicely. Carla this year, Carla Reed, is currently serving as the NCMEA Middle School Choral Section Chair for the state of North Carolina. And I think Carla altogether has 60 superior ratings since she's been in the program. Yeah, we're just throwing out. And Terry has the 8th, okay, the 8th grade, well, he has 16 consecutive superior rates for 7th grade. The 8th grade band received a superior rate, and it was the band's 36th consecutive superior rating, which is the longest active superior streak of any middle or high school band in the state of North Carolina. And Jason, I didn't, how many do you think you have altogether? 65?
And Jason Childers is serving our district as the Northwest District Band Masters Association resident for the last 10 years.
It's just all over our district. I mean, these are masters. And I think Terry, and we've talked about this before, you're well on your way to breaking that 42-year consecutive record held right here in Caldwell County, which put us on the map. So we're just so thrilled for all of you, just so proud of you. There's a lot of work that goes behind these ratings each year. So let's give everyone just a big round of applause. And I think we need to get your picture.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. And now, we're not finished with our recognitions. We're going to have Heather Poole and Nancy Phipps come forward. And they are going to present to the Board of Education our student teachers that have been assigned to the Caldwell County Schools. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you Chairman Pennell, Vice Chair Branch, Dr. Phipps, and members of the board for allowing us to come before the board tonight. On behalf of Dr. Griffin, the Human Resources Department, and the mentor team, we would like to recognize all of the student teachers who have been working in our district during the spring semester. We would like to express our gratitude to these student teachers for their dedication to our students. During the spring semester, these future educators have not only helped our students to achieve academic success, but they have also served as positive role models to both students and staff alike. This past week, our school system has posted multiple teaching positions for the 2022-2023 school year. We do encourage these teacher candidates to submit an application and go through the hiring process. Caldwell County is a wonderful place to call home.
In a moment, we would like to recognize each student teacher and ask them to stand and remain standing until all names have been called. Afterwards, all student teachers and their clinical educator and any family members present are invited to walk across the hall to attend a small reception to celebrate their accomplishments. Please hold your applause until all student teachers have been recognized. Okay? Congratulations to Elliot Allen from Wes Lenore Elementary School. V. Benitez, Lower Creek Elementary School. Matthew Borneman, Wes Caldwell High School. Rachel Estes, Valmead Elementary School. Carter Etgen, Wes Caldwell High School. Michael Gutierrez, High Brighton High School. Kaitlyn Goff, High Brighton High School. Connor Good, High Brighton High School. Victoria Howell, Valmead Elementary School. Gretel Jarquin, Whitnall Elementary School. Allison Knapp, Granite Falls Elementary School. Alexis Lael, Wes Caldwell High School. Willow Larson, Happy Valley School. Max Libera, Wes Caldwell High School. Shiloh Lovett, High Brighton High School. Kaitlyn McBurney, Hudson Elementary School. Kristy McDoris, Davenport A+ Elementary School. Brayden Metters, South Caldwell High School. Tanya Moses, Gamewell Elementary School. Kristen Parrish, Wes Caldwell High School. Alex Roberts, South Caldwell High School. Lauren Selbach, Gamewell Middle School. Madison Smith, Davenport A+ Elementary School. Mackenzie Suddath, Sawmills Elementary School. Peter Elliott, try, Binbok, I'm so sorry, South Caldwell High School. Kaz Wheeler, High Brighton High School. And Aleah Wilson, Sawmills Elementary School. At this time, we would like for all student teachers to join us up front so that we can take a group pictures with members of the Board of Education.
I also, I also I would also like to thank Randy Hart for being here tonight and representing High Brighton. I didn't see him earlier, so I wanted to make sure.
Thank you to all the student teachers, and we hope to see you in Caldwell County again, hopefully next year. But anyway, we're getting ready to start our business session. If you want to go for dinner or whatever, now would be the appropriate time. Thank you for being here, and hope you have a great Easter and Easter break. Okay, we'll continue on with our business section of the meeting. Next item is public comment, and we have received no requests for public comments, so we'll move along with the agenda. And next, since Dr. Griffin is not able to be here tonight, I want to recognize Dr. Phipps to do his part.
Thank you, Chairman Pennell. I have item 8A is Human Resources Services Usual and Customary Items. These are information items and require no action on your part tonight. With that being said, I'd like to move to 8B, which is Human Resources Services Usual and Customary Action Items. This deals with contracts. You've had a chance to review that and would respectfully request approval.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the Human Resources Services Usual and Customary Action Items as it relates to contracts?
I'll make a motion that we approve the item related to contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 8C is Human Resource Services Usual and Customary Personnel Action Items, and this involves a substitute list. Again, I would respectfully request approval for this item.
Do I hear a motion, we approve the Human Resources Usual and Customary Personnel Action Items as it relates to the substitute list?
Chairman Pennell, make a motion to approve the substitute list as presented.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And item 8D represents the April Board Transfers for the 22-23 school year. I would like to present this, but with one caveat, and that is that there are several students here that are, have applied for closed schools. And we need to go back and make sure that we're following the guidelines in terms of students that have been accepted into closed schools. So I'd like to pull those from this item. We'll bring those back next month. But the approval tonight would be for the April Board Transfers for 22-23 for students going to schools that are not designated as closed.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
That we do them based on the ones from the non-closed schools and reevaluate the closed schools applications.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the April Board Transfers. Is there a second?
I second the motion. Student transfers to open schools.
Open schools only.
Right, yes. As presented by Dr. Phipps, any, anything, any questions?
No, I was just overwhelmed when I read through those 31 pages. Just overwhelmed with the transfers.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add, and I know there may be some parents or guardians that are anxious when they hear that, we just want to make sure that we go through what our protocol and procedure is. And any students that have been in a feeder pattern or have been in the school, they're just a renewal of going through the application. We just want to make sure that we're following our own guidelines and that we're doing this in a just and fair way. We just feel like we need to take our time to do that, and we'll have all that ready in the main meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Dr. Phipps. Next, I'd like to recognize Assistant Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Johnson.
Chairman Pennell, Board Members, and Dr. Phipps, I have item 9A tonight. It is for the state, Budget Amendment Number 8, excuse me, for the State Public School Fund in the amount of $240,351. It is for summer reading camps and literacy intervention, two PRCs that we don't typically get at the beginning of the year, it's based on test data and some other things that we've gotten for summer, summer learning. I also have Budget Amendment Number 9 for the Federal Grant Fund in the amount of $32,521. It just transfers and some amendments, adjustments to the original allotments from DPI for those two, for federal budgets. If those two are approved tonight, it'll ring the total budget for Caldwell County Schools to $172,388,640.46. I'd like to request that those be approved as submitted.
Do I hear a motion that we approve Budget Amendment Number 8, State Public School Fund, and Budget Amendment Number 9, which is the Federal Grant Fund, as presented by Mr. Johnson?
I move that we approve the two budget amendments as presented.
Is there a second? Is there any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, I'd like to recognize our Superintendent, Dr. Don Phipps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10A is the proposed calendar for the traditional high school, all of our traditional schools in our county, as well as the Casson Early College High School Calendar. The Casson Early College calendars, as you all know, are a little different than our traditional. I don't ever want to talk in public about school calendar without just making the plea to our General Assembly to please give us local control to determine when we start school. This school year, this calendar is one of the worst calendars that we've ever had to deal with, and because we're not allowed to start any earlier than the Monday closest to August of 26, school this year for traditional schools has to start on the 29th of August, which just creates a major issue when we're trying to wrap up by the Christmas break. But with that being said, I've presented to our board, we've had it up for public review, listened to a great deal of comment, and I've made a few changes to the traditional calendar. I wanted to note those. The, we went back in and looked at how we calculate instructional time, and for the public to be aware of what the guidelines and rules are that we have to follow, we have to either have a minimum of 1,025 instructional hours, or we have to have 185 days. And we've gone back and we've calculated, and I've been able to ask the board for us to put in three days that are dedicated for professional development. The reason we've put these in the spring, they show up on January the 27th, which is a Friday, February the 24th, which is a Friday, and March the 27th, which is a Monday. These are to allow our letters training to be done and the other professional development that needs to be accomplished throughout the school year. We have a few We have a few PD days that are at the beginning of the year and then one on Election Day in the month of November. This is just allowing our teachers to have that dedicated time to get this work done. If we didn't start so late in August, we'd be able to sprinkle days throughout the calendar. We just don't have that opportunity. So those are the only changes. Again, those are requests that have come from feedback that we've had. The other feedback would be to try to end the, the school year earlier, and we can't and be able to get in the number of hours that we have. We're going to look long and hard at what we have control over moving forward as we start the, the year in August for the calendar that'll be coming up after that, to try to have a calendar that's, that's as attractive to all of our stakeholders as we can. But I'll be the first to admit that there, there are problems with this and there are guidelines that we have to follow, but our ending and beginning dates won't change. And I'd like to propose both of these calendars for approval. They are different calendars for the public to look at to see the differences. Again, the early college and the Cassin, the rules for calendar are different for those schools than they are for our traditional schools.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the 2022-2023 traditional school calendar as well as the 2022-2023 calendar for the Caldwell Applied Science Academy as well as Caldwell Early College High School, as presented by Dr. Phipps?
I move that we approve the calendars as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
I wish there was some other way. I'd vote against this calendar today if there was some other way. The legislators have got to release us. It's crazy.
Well, we know a lot of hard work has gone into making this the best calendar that we can possibly come up with, but, you know, there's, there's certainly a, a good number of limits to what can be done, but, you know, they've done an excellent job considering all factors. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item is naming of the gym floor at West Caldwell High School for approval, and we have had the public hearing earlier this afternoon, and the name of the court is to be Anderson Trivet Court, and that is given to us at request of the administration of the school. And the names are put simply in alphabetical order. So what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we allow that to happen. They were great service to this community, to the West Caldwell family, and I'll make that motion that we name the court the Anderson Trivet Court.
Also, let me add that Danny Anderson has retired, ain't going to come back. My definition of retirement is when he left in 2015, so I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Certainly, both people are worthy and have done great things for Caldwell County schools and certainly West Caldwell through the years.
Also, this is the year that they're going to be doing the gym floor anyway.
Yeah.
So it makes sense to do it now.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. Next item is closed session. Do I hear a motion that the board go into closed session?
Do I have to read this?
Go ahead.
I don't know if I can. Can I say that? I don't have to read that number? Make a motion we go into closed session as laid out in the agenda.
Second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will be in closed session and expect no action once we come back. Motion passes, we will be in closed session and expect no action once we come back. Okay, do I hear a motion that we adjourn our meeting tonight?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Everybody.[1760.72]